Press report. Okay, so, thank you all for being here. Those introductions were really helpful. I think what you learned Director Simon is that there's a lot of folks that are interested in everything to do with sustainability, just like me. So we are really lucky to have our new director of sustainability for the city of Albuquerque here, Anne Simon. She generously agreed right after starting her job to come on here and tell us what's happening not only with sustainability in our city, but also the new sustainability ordinance that is being proposed that I am sponsoring that will be heard in land use, planning and zoning very soon. So we are going to turn it over to Anne and let her give a presentation. She's got slides. She's going to walk us through what the city's doing. And then please hold your questions and at the end we will do Q and A from anybody that has questions. So thank you Anne for being here. We're going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you all so much. It's wonderful to be here and I really appreciate the invitation from Councilor Feeblecorn and her staff. So it sounds like a lot of you are all very familiar with sustainability and what we do, but I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm going to go quickly because I have a lot of slides and we, it sounds like we have a lot to talk about. So slow me down if you need to, or you can catch me at the end, but I want to save time for the, for the resolution that the counselor mentioned. I'm going to share my screen. Now, can everybody see these slides? Hopefully just with nods of heads. Oh, great. Okay, excellent. Well, so here we are. I'm the, see if I can, there we go. I am the, as Counselor said, the, the new sustainability officer. I'm also deputy director of policy for the city of Albuquerque and I'm so happy to be standing on the shoulders of the team that is in place. Denise Castillo Gonzalez, Albert Lee, Alice Main and Sandra West, who are our sustainability specialists and can always answer any questions that you have following this presentation. These are the things that I'm going to talk about. So there's a lot going on. So hopefully we can get through everything. We're going to just, I'm just going to give you a little overview of the, of the climate action plan, which it sounds like a lot of you are involved with. Talk about our renewable energy goal, the mobile source pollution solutions that we have planned, composting and food waste diversion, which is a really big part of our global emissions and nature-based solutions to heat mitigation, which includes our energy efficiency work. So then I'm going to just end with some grand opportunities that we have, which are really exciting. And then hopefully we'll have time to talk about the resolution. All right. So as many of you know, in 2021, the, the city, together with the community, developed 50 strategies to combat climate pollution and, and resiliency in our city. And this is essentially our guiding document. You can find the document online. I'm not going to touch on it too much, but it does give us sort of a, a pathway to, to focus on things, things that we can do in our city to help mitigate the negative effects of, of, of climate pollution. The city has a renewable energy goal. It's 100% renewable energy to, to fuel all of the operations of the city by 2025. And if anyone's paying attention, that's next year already. Fortunately, the good news is that we are actually 80% there. We are about 20% short and we have a plan to, to bridge that gap with community solar. If anybody's been following the news, community solar is a way to do small-scale community solar to help communities lower their energy burden. Some of the stats for the, for the city are that we have, we are the 13th local government in renewable energy use. We are the fourth largest city for most installed solar per capita in the US. Currently, we have 38 solar arrays on city facilities, which give us 7.5 megawatts of power. Just to put that in perspective, we need about 40 megawatts. So 20 megawatts actually come from PNM Solar Direct Farm. But it gets us to about 80% of our goal, which is really, really wonderful. And this is the big PNM Solar Direct Farm. So you can see we're, we're, we're pulling a lot of power from, from a renewable source, the sun. And we hope to, to bridge the last 20% here in the next 18 months. Now I'm going to talk about transportation and some of our plans to start to transition our fleet. Currently, as you know, the, the, the electrification boom is, is upon us. The, the feds are really pushing EV charging stations and, and hopefully allowing us to, to, to purchase non-fossil fuel mobile vehicles. And, and we are also following suit in the city. We have 20, currently we have 20 level two charging stations, which will power your car in about six to eight hours. And those have 36 ports, but we're bringing more online in the next two years. We are going to bring 29 more level two charging stations and seven DC fast charging stations online by mid next year. The DC fast charging are the ones that we really like. They are really more equivalent to pulling up to a gas station where you would just spend about 20, 20 to 30 minutes and maybe even faster charging your vehicle. We are asking for $7 million in a big grant that we just put into the EPA for more in our, sorry, electric vehicles to, to replace the current combustion engine vehicles that we have in, in the city's fleet. And currently, our transit department is purchasing 20 new electric buses. So we're really moving forward, which is very exciting. Kind of a fun project that we launched last month with the counselor and with PNM is called AMP. It's the Affordable Mobility Platform. It's a private company called Fourth. Is putting these vehicles that you see on the, on one side of the screen in, in a, in a community. So it's a privately funded and run car sharing program for those who might want to test out an EV, an electric vehicle and/or who, who just maybe don't have access to a vehicle, but need, everybody needs a car now and then. You can rent this vehicle for about two hours and it, the pricing is scalable to your income level. And it's really fun. This is the first site that Fourth has given us and they're going to put one in Santa Fe, but we hope that it's a scalable model, that it's something that we can do moving forward in multiple locations. And then the picture on the right, of course, is all of us, except for some reason, we didn't get the counselor in that picture. But there we are in front of the, the EV charging station. That's what, that's what a charging station looks like. So it's very simple. I'm going to switch now to materials management. Again, these topic areas are, are the ones that, that you all helped us create in our, in our climate action plan. Interestingly, food waste is one of the largest causes of methane emissions in our landfills. So it's something that, while we don't think of it as being a big climate contributor, it really is. We have two big projects. We have a food scrap pilot, which is in two kitchens, one at a senior center and one at the Explora Children's Museum Commissary that is run by Three Sisters Kitchen. And it helps us teach people how to divert compost and food scraps. The other big project is a community composting project where this one is at the Varela Senior Center, or yeah, the Varela Senior Center. And there's our wonderful staff member Sandra West in the, in the middle. And we're teaching people how to separate their, their compost waste. And they're able to bring compost to this facility, then a little green bucket and soil solutions, turn it into, into nutrient-rich soil amendment that we can all use. So it's, it's really fun. It's, it's really popular. It's being well cared for and well used. And we again, hope to scale and replicate this model across the city. In the interest of time, I'm not going to really go into this slide too much. It's very technical, but it just gives the idea of the, the direct glow greenhouse gas emissions that we see in the middle here from vehicles and homes versus the indirect, which are the things that we don't even think about, the things that, that allowed that vehicle to be on the road in the first place, the steel that it took to, to get to build the vehicle. The mining that had to happen to get the steel out and smelted and over to the vehicle manufacturing facility and so forth. So when we talk about food waste, these indirect and, and, and downstream, upstream and downstream activities really are very, very important in seeing how relevant it is to look at food waste as a greenhouse gas emitter. Another big area in our office is the built environment. In fact, 55% of our greenhouse gas emissions in Albuquerque are from our own buildings. So, so some of the work that Ona Porter and her team at Prosperity Works help us with are very, very important. So not only is it important to reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions coming from our building and, and the use of fossil fuels in our buildings, but it also helps to do energy efficiency maximization, which is what Prosperity helps us with. And, and I know the counselor is a big proponent. We also look at nature-based solutions like trees and parks, which help cool our, our city. I want to talk a little bit about frontline communities. I'm sorry I'm going so fast, but I want to make sure we have time for questions. One of the big lenses on the work that we do in the Sustainability Office is that we make sure to always consider the most vulnerable communities first. These are the communities that have been hit first and worst by the effects of, of environmental pollutants. It's, it's something that the federal government has been leading the way for some time in, in its Justice 40 work. And it's something that we embrace here at the city with our own Justice 40 work. And Justice 40 is to assure that 40% of all pollution reduction measures hit these frontline communities. These communities that are historically underserved or disenfranchised. And, and not, and really unfortunately bearing a large burden of the environmental contaminants we see in our community. Here's Ms. Porter right here with our wonderful staff person Denise Gonzalez and the counselor talking about the energy efficiency project that we have in the, in the city. Currently, the project has served 800 homes since 2020, and this includes energy audits, which are free to, to folks who are interested in having us come over and serve them. And then they can lead to energy efficiency upgrades like, like new insulation, getting rid of those leaky windows, putting a new electrical panel into your home, those kinds of efficient upgrades, even roofs, I believe, are applicable. But you can see that the, that the, that the funding that we currently operate this program out of $100,000 from the city council, thanks to the counselor and others, does not go very far. So we have applied for some funding from the state that, through an energy efficiency, community development block, block grant that hopefully will continue to allow us to help the community and do these upgrades. Urban heat is a big guide for us in terms of where we distribute our work. This is an example of a map that was developed by Kappa Heat Mapping in 2021, where we had a lot of sensors around the city. And you can see there's a blue line right through the, through the edge of the city here and it's, and it's the Rio Grande and it's the Bosque. You can also see other sort of blue areas. And these are correspond to the parks that we have in our city. And fortunately, we're in a great place with Albuquerque because we have a park within 10, a 10-minute walk of almost all residents in Albuquerque. So we're very lucky. So we're both a heat island and a heat sink, which allows us to capture some of that carbon that comes out of cities with a lot of asphalt. The other thing I want to mention about the heat work that we're doing is that we're working with NASA right now. And they are helping us look at sort of social and vulnerability layers to these heat maps, which allow us to identify more specifically where in the city we need to plant more trees, for example, or expand a park. Because we all know that when we have trees, not only is the, is the, is the map, you know, cooler and the, and the city cooler, but those neighborhoods thrive. We have higher retention of home value. We have, we see more commerce happening in those neighborhoods. We see traffic slowing down. We see more pride in, in homeownership and neighborhood association membership levels. And the list goes on. So this is really interesting work and happy to talk more about it afterwards. All right. So the whole point of our work, as I mentioned, is to build a resilient Albuquerque that we can all live in and thrive in. So we're doing this through all of the measures I mentioned, but now we're going even further. We're not stopping here. We're doing, we're, we're applying for this community energy efficiency block grant program that I mentioned. We just submitted a $100 million grant from the US EPA called the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, which I'm going to talk about in a second. And then we have another EPA grant coming down the pike, the Community Change Grant. The CPRG, we call it, the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, is a $5 billion grant that came out of the infrastructure, sorry, the, the IRA. I'm blanking on the, so that came down from the feds and is providing billions of dollars for this kind of climate work that is very important. And as I mentioned, the city applied for almost $100 million just two weeks ago. So fingers crossed. These are the measures that we are going to address in that climate grant. We're doing lots of energy efficiency. We're doing a multifamily decarbonization, which is part of our effort to look at multifamily homes. We are buying electric vehicles. We're putting in fast charging stations. We're, we're expanding our food waste diversion. We're working with tribal governments and other partners like Burnaleo County and CNN as well. So I'm happy to, to talk more about some of the measures that are in the CPRG, but we're very excited. So fingers and toes crossed that we get that funding because it could really help the city of Albuquerque. And we are, coming down the pike here is the Community Change Grant. This is a 10 to $20 million grant. In fact, we can submit multiple grants, our understanding. It really works on to build up that resiliency with disadvantaged communities. It builds capacity so that we can continue this work on our own and, and, and it requires partnerships with our community-based organizations like Prosperity Works. So we're really excited about getting a Community Change Grant submitted sometime midsummer. And that's about all I have for now. I guess maybe Counselor, would you like me to quickly outline the, the, the sustainability resolution?
Yes, please.
Okay. So at the urging of Counselor Feeblecorn, we went ahead and looked back on a resolution that sort of codifies all of the sustainability measures in the city of Albuquerque. And I was surprised to find that we had, interestingly eclipsed almost all of the measures that we set up years ago. And I, I believe that initially some of these measures were set up in the Chavez administration. And then it was updated some in the Berry administration to look at lead buildings and so forth. But we have even gone further than all of those initial goals. So it was really important to, to improve and, and really codify what's, what's happening now and, and then to have some aspirational goals like getting our 100% solar-run government, so that we can get our government run by renewable sources instead of through fossil fuels. We also have measures such as our procurement. We want to make sure that we procure as locally as possible. And, and then just continuing the energy efficiency work that we're doing and, and, and continue with our fleet transition to electric vehicles. I think those are the, the big things in our sustainability resolution. So that was introduced about two weeks ago. And as the counselor said, it's been referred over to the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee. And we might need your help to help us get that, get that introduced into city council for action.
Thanks, Anne.
Counselor.
Perfect. If you wouldn't mind, stop sharing your screen so I can see folks. I can't see. So if you have any, there we go. If you have questions, you can use the raise hand function or you can just raise your hand. And we can get any questions for Anne. Great. I'm going to, I'm going to go while y'all think of yours because I know you. In a few minutes, there'll be three people waiting for their hand. Oh, Jean, you're, you're already up. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much for this update. I followed the creation of the 2021 plan and helped our League of Women Voters group to learn about different segments, different components of the plan by writing articles in our monthly newsletter on each category. So we were, are familiar with those initial goals. And so I'll be happy to see a new report, which shows how these goals have been met. I hope you issue a new written report so that we can track to see that the results of those 50 strategies, which were very impressive strategies. But today I want to talk about trees. I'm on the Landscape Improvement Committee for my neighborhood association and we have lots of trees. We have 15 trees. We've recently had to remove two of them. But what I found in my research to try to get funds to help to take care of the trees was that we've got a good tree planting program, but we don't have anything much for maintenance. And especially with ziriscaping, which we've tried to do more ziriscaping. What we found is that, that reduces the amount of water that sustains those existing trees. And I had a lot of trouble finding information about how much water, how to set it up. I know the Water Authority has a little bit of information about how to do it. Landscape companies, they also have a little bit of information about how to do it, but it's not very precise or easy to find. It's more difficult. And so if you could add on to the tree planting effort, the tree maintenance effort and how important it is to continue to water those trees and how to do it properly, I think that would actually be a great contribution to neighborhoods that are trying, and individual property owners, of course, as well, trying to maintain their own trees. Because you're absolutely right. Trees make all the difference in terms of the hospitable ambiance of a neighborhood, you know, and people walking around with their dogs. I mean, it's just, we really have to maintain our trees. And that brings me to my second point, which is tree maintenance and care in our city parks. My local park is just in pathetic shape once again. It needs to have lots of tree trimming done. A lot of the roots are coming up. And so when the mowers go over the grass, they're cutting the tops of those roots. I mean, it's definitely going to kill a lot of trees in our local park over time. And so the, the, the sustainability of our parks, I think, is in jeopardy if we don't pay closer attention to caring for them. So I'd like, I don't know if I add that to your agenda or whether you can send it over to the Parks and Rec Department, but I think that they need to do a better job. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And I absolutely have taken note of that and would love to send that over. What is the park that you live near, if you don't mind?
There is a La Palomita Park. Actually, about five years ago, I contacted the counselor because we needed to have some trimming because you couldn't even walk around parts of the park because the, some of the limbs had grown to interfere with where people could walk. But there's just so many dead trees. There's so many roots that are showing that it's, you know, it's, it's just, it's just looking pretty bad, really. And so we really, but not, not just my park. I bet there are a lot of parks in a lot of the neighborhoods that really could use more careful attention because the frequency with which they actually take care of the trees, I think, has really been much reduced.
So I'll just jump in and say, I, I, I do want to say that I think our Parks and Recreation Department does an amazing job in general on park maintenance. And if you see a park that you feel isn't getting the maintenance it deserves, please report that to 311. In my experience, the city arborist and this Parks and Recreation staff have been very responsive to those things. So, you know, I don't know about the specific one that you're talking about, Jean, but it just in general for everyone, if you do see that, please report it to 311. I do, I do think you'll find that the park staff are all people who want the park system to be successful and spend, you know, dedicate their lives to making it that way. So they're really, really interested in these issues and they, they're very responsive. But I love your idea of, of additional maintenance for the tree planting. I think you've all heard me talking about the Neighborhoods Program. And I'm the first counselor that's done two plantings in one year. I've done that every year since I took off. Was going to do it again this year. This year, we're adding an understory planting to one of the plantings. So it'll be trees with pollinator-friendly
greenery underneath it. I think those are really important
for all the reasons that Anne talked about, but I also think that it's really important that we plant trees in more frontline communities where folks can't just go out and buy their own trees. So I'm, I'm really proud of that program. And again, those funds used to be council-directed. Now that's embedded in the Parks and Rec Department, specifically because they do care so much about the tree planting. So I, I love that idea of adding maintenance though, Jean. So we'll, we'll think through that and see what we can do. Any other questions? Ruth?
I want to build on what Jean said. First of all, I live near Sister Cities Park and it is well cared for. I have a large dog and we walk in a lot of parks around the Northeast and Southeast Heights. And I haven't seen a park that's in need of lots of care. So kudos to Parks and Rec. My neighborhood is about 50 years old and it was planted with a lot of ash trees, which are dying. We lost, in the two-block area around my house, we lost five or six trees in the last 18 months. And what I see from my neighbors is, oh, good, now I don't have to rake up the leaves anymore. And, yeah, and I can tell the difference in, in my immediate neighborhood. And I'm wondering, what do you in in my immediate neighborhood, and I'm wondering, what do you do with homeowners who probably could put in trees, but they just aren't motivated to do it? We need more education, I don't know, I don't feel like I should go knocking on their door and say, hey, I want you to plant a tree.
I wouldn't suggest that one, Anne, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, maybe we, maybe there are places in the medians or or in the public right of way where we could supplement where some trees have come down. You know, perhaps if you get with the counselor, we can, we can just look at some, look at some streets in particular.
There's no medians, I'm I'm just talking about the street that I live on. And honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm a privileged person, I live a block from Sister Cities Park. But I can tell when I walk to the park, you know, there's a ten degree difference between my street and Cross McKinney and going to the park.
I will say that there is a lot of funding coming, we just put in for approval to put in an application for a very large grant for additional trees throughout the city, that's a, I believe it's a Parks and Recreation request grant. And so as we get more of this money from the IRA really flowing in and focusing in on trees. I I hope we can do more education and outreach just in general about the value, you know, the in the Sustainability Office has started that whole urban heat islands mapping and really starting to get people to think in those terms, so I think we need to continue that front, but I I I always suggest that you not tell your neighbors what to do with their property.
Okay, thank you, that sounds great.
Sure, and then Wendy and then Ted.
Hi, thank you, God, what a great presentation, thanks very much for this time and effort. I would love to have more information about the community composting or even those pilot projects of the the composting efforts through, I think you said it was a senior center, and then I already forgotten the other location, but that's kind of a passion of mine, and I've been reworking my front yard very, very slowly, but on pretty much only using composting methods, I bought a little bit of stuff from Soil Solutions one year, and I have a huge compost heap in my backyard. All of my debris goes into that, all of my kitchen scraps go, I mean, all of them, right? We have now got a bucket outside our front yard, which is, you know, volunteering potatoes, and it's exciting when things grow and right, and I'm sure my neighbors don't appreciate some of my chop and drop method. And again, like, that'd be a thing where, like, please don't tell me to clean up my yard, because those things are valuable and there's insects and and stuff going on for that soil, right, and I'm trying to figure out how, I'm learning, I'm learning, but I could really use the support of you know, additional measures and neighbors that also want to get on with that and you know, change some of the desolate soil situations we have here, because it's easy, it's not hard. It just needs some encouragement, I think, so I'd love to participate too in in that, if there's volunteer efforts or something like that.
Fantastic, thank you, and feel free to reach out to me, I believe I put my email on the slide, but it's a simon@cabq.gov.
And I'll just say that, and I don't remember what month it was, but if you're interested, you can just email Amanda to get this, but we on this Zoom meeting a couple of months ago, we heard from Sarah Hurtow from the Arid LID Coalition about green stormwater infrastructure practices for individuals. And it was a really interesting presentation and some really great ideas about how you can do green stormwater infrastructure in your land, in your property, that really helps with soil improvements, water retention minimizes water pollution that's going into the river, stops hydroplaning and flooding in your neighborhoods, like, it's really, it was a really great presentation, so that might be something of interest as well.
Sorry, is that a link on your, is there a a link to those archived Zooms?
Email Amanda at cabq.gov and she can find it for you, it's on our website somewhere, but I'm not sure where. Ted.
See if I can get this unmuted, I just wanted to mention real quickly about getting your neighbors to plant trees. And I know in my, I live in the McKinley neighborhood, and I know that Tree New Mexico has had two tree giveaways, and at least in the neighborhood. And I I remember at the one, I mean, people were lying down the street in their cars to get trees, so that, I don't know how they choose what neighborhoods that they go into. But they've done our neighborhood at least twice that I know, because I got trees from, I got some desert olives from them.
Yeah, Ted, that's, that's the tree giveaway that I was mentioning, that we used to be through City Council, but now we've funded the money through Parks and Rec. And so your city counselor works to choose with Tree New Mexico to choose the locations for those giveaways and then funds that. Yeah.
Alright, cool.
Any other questions, comments? I'm just going to jump in real quick because I just got some really good news that I that I've been waiting on pins and needles for. The Environmental Improvement Board just voted down the the motion to stay, to stop the implementation of the Advanced Clean Cars Two Rule. So that was very, very good news, yes, no, let's all have some jazz fingers, so that was exciting, and I don't, I haven't heard I haven't heard from the city county air quality board yet, I think they're still in deliberations, but remember that that was a unanimous vote by our air board, so I doubt that they're going to overturn their unanimous decision, so I think we are in
They voted it down too, Tammy. They voted the petition down too.
Oh, they did, okay, good, I I had, no one had texted me about that, so so Advanced Clean Cars Two will continue implementation, that's a huge, huge issue for our entire state, especially for Albuquerque where there's immense amounts of emissions happening, so very, very good. I will just in, unless I see other questions, just remind you all of about a couple of the other sustainability things that we're doing here in District Seven. One, on Wednesday night of this week, we did pass, City Council passed for the entire state or for the entire city a green stormwater infrastructure bill. It passed unanimously, which was amazing. And that will add green stormwater infrastructure to all medians, landscape buffers, everything in our complete streets ordinance will now include green stormwater infrastructure in the design. And I think that is a very, very big step for Albuquerque. We've seen this in other states, but we have not seen that movement in New Mexico, so that's exciting, yeah, Jean.
Could you explain what exactly that is, green stormwater, I mean, isn't all stormwater going into one place? So how do we make it green?
So right now, in in general, when there's rain that comes down, everyone funnels it out of their yards into the streets, and it goes into a stormwater drain where it goes back to the river. And so green stormwater infrastructure are localized projects that say, you know, it makes no sense to be washing all of our water away. We should keep it where it falls or close to where it falls, let it get back into the soil, go back into the ground. While doing so, it actually aerates the soil and 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 really makes the soil healthier. But it also keeps water from going into the streets for hydroplaning, and it keeps water from going in the streets, picking up all the oils and toxins before it goes back into the river. So it's really best management to try to maintain as much water where it falls. And so that's it, and that again is that presentation that we had on the District Seven Connection several months ago that Amanda can get to anybody, but that's the general idea. So it makes no sense for us to have medians and landscape buffers in our city streets that aren't trying to minimize the amount of water that's flowing off, and I will say that the, you know, water falling off is getting worse and worse as climate change happens, we're going to have more and more really intense downfalls of water, and in District Seven, we have people literally flooding. And so anything we can do to minimize the amount of stormwater that's just being you know, pushed into the street and down drains, which are not built for that large of a quantity, is a good thing. There are additional benefits to stormwater infrastructure that's green in that it creates more more reductions in the urban heat island impact, gives you, gives wild critters more of a place to live. And it's prettier, so all in all, green stormwater infrastructure is the way to go.
Tammy, commercial construction already has to not allow runoff their property, right? They they've already, now this is adding more to it, but commercial ones already had that.
They they have some requirements. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I I'm, I'm a, I I think you can tell, I'm a big fan of green stormwater infrastructure, but I was really excited that it passed City Council unanimously. Those of you that come to this pretty regularly know that hardly anything passes City Council unanimously, so that was exciting. And then we talked about the Neighborhoods Program, I will continue doing the two plantings a year in District Seven. Really pushing for that understory, the pollinator friendly plants under those trees for the future. I did do legislation last year that is bee friendly, and it requires that we think through our traditional methods of of pesticides and and things like that, and really include whether or not that is going to impact our pollinator population, and that's hugely important to me. Along with that, we have a policy in District Seven, anytime we're doing anything at a park or in a median, we're including a pollinator garden, so we want to make sure that we're making that as friendly as possible for pollinators. Including some mapping requirements so that we can see if there is potential to have some thoroughfares for pollinators, because having my backyard a bee friendly area when there's no bee friendly areas anywhere around is not as impactful as having some sort of corridor setup. So those are just a few of the things, any other questions or comments? Alright, I think we will let Anne go, give you back seven minutes of your life, thank you so much for attending today and sharing all that information, Anne. And folks, if you want to look, yeah, thank you. If you want to look up the ordinance that just got introduced and has been assigned to the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee, it's R twenty four thirty four. And you can look that up through the city legislator site, or you can just email Amanda and she can get it to you. You don't see her in, oh, there she is, but that's, that will be heard hopefully at Land Use Planning and Zoning in a couple of weeks, and then it will go to full council if it gets through Land Use Planning and Zoning, so I would encourage you to, if you like the ordinance and if you like sustainability to reach out to the members of Land Use Planning and Zoning and ask them to please pass that out to full council for full consideration. Alright, seeing no other questions, we we can stop sustainability if there's any other questions about anything else, we have about six minutes left. Okay, I appreciate you all being here, and I will see you next month, thanks.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.